Work session of October 16th at 4:00.
Your mic wasn't on. We'd like to call that.
It's the work session of October 16th, 4:00. Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. The purpose of this work session that we're starting early was to have the 2018 preliminary budget presentation. Giovanna is going to go over the overall budget before we dive into 208, 248, 249, 252, 266, and 893. Giovanna?
Hello. My name is Giovanna Neal. I'm the accounting director here. And what I'd like to do is just do a quick overview of where we get some of our numbers. I did this last year. We're looking at our taxes. How do I estimate the tax budget? How do we do the revenue sharing? You know, overall, on the fringes, how much is going to increase, decrease? So we'll just hit on those spots now. And if you have a question, please let me know. I know I did not put this in your packets, but I did copy one for each of you. So if you have questions as we go along, please stop me.
Can you send it to us electronically?
I did.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, I did that this afternoon. Okay. So the first thing I'd like to go over is the tax revenue.
Jimmy Wilson is not present.
So I'll be going over, like I said, the tax revenue, revenue sharing, basic expenditure assumptions, and then pension, and the OPEB overview. So where, I'm sorry, can you hear me with me sitting like this? It's okay if I sit like this? Okay. No? Okay. Let me move this. Okay. There we go. Because I'm leaning over. Okay. So for the tax revenue, we're looking at any changes. So the taxable values, and what I'm looking at is what we report on the L-4029s. And I did put prior year. That was that $1,202,96,39. That was in 2017, which is 2018's revenue for us. And then our new, as you can see, it did increase. Our taxable value did go up. I do have some worksheets in the back of this that kind of goes over each one of those numbers. That did increase to $1,290,653,726. So that is just the taxable values. The expected increase for the tax revenues, we did have our actual amount that came in for 2018 at $16,966,194. And that's for all of the millages that we do have. Again, I do have worksheets in the back of this that'll go over each one of those items. What I have budgeted for 2019 is $19,333,300. And that's an increase of 13.95. Again, I do have a worksheet for that that I will show you, but I did want to kind of share that with you. The amounts that I have for the budget, I have actually went through and looked at what I believed were the Michigan Tax Tribunal judgments, any board of reviews. I did go over this with Linda Goslin, our assessing director. We kind of tried to see what needs to be adjusted throughout the year. And so the number of adjustment that I have is that $1,287,924,179. And if you can see the difference, I'm sorry, the one up top is that $1,290. So I did adjust that just a little bit down in order to get my numbers. We did not have a headly rollback this year, and we will not be getting any essential services extra this year. Our millage rates, this was approved under September board meeting. This is my budget and forecast. And this is how I actually come up with the numbers that I do. You can see I have actuals for 2017. I do have a budget for 2018 and an actual for 2018. You can see the difference. There was a difference between the taxable value because we did have a late exemption. The state had extended the exemption period for people with personal property taxes. So that hit after the assessment was certified in March. So that's kind of why the numbers are a little different there. And then, of course, my 19 budget and my forecast for 2020.
Giovanna?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just make a point that, like, that's the first time the estimation for projected taxable revenue has not met its goal.
Was off that much. I've been off a little bit, but not this. This was almost, well, you can see it's like $140,000 total.
And the reason is because they extended the filing of the personal property exemption forms?
Exactly.
Okay. So when we did our numbers, you didn't have that information?
Right. And that's why you've had such a big jump in 19. It's just, it'll smooth out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. These are the actual and projected millage rates. We just approved the 19, 2019. These are just worksheets that I do have.
Question. So taxable value, is it, the increases for one mil, is that, it's not quite $100,000, right?
Right. That's...
It's like 90-some thousand? Do you know what that?
I don't know that, right?
Yeah. It's kind of, well, I know what I can do because the general fund is 1 point some mils. So, yeah, it's about, it's just about $100,000, right? General fund is at 1 point...
So it'd be, if it's a billion dollars, so it's a billion 287 taxable, so 1 mil is 1.287 million for 19.
It was 1.183. Thank you.
Correct. Yes, that is right. Thank you.
That's exactly what I needed. My brain's just not functioning. It's not quite $100,000. $193,000 per mil.
All right. And so this is how you do the calculation for the total millage. So you can take any millage and then pop in there, and that would give you the amount that you need. We did increase the fire pension. That went to 1.3712 mils. It was at 1.2. We did increase that. We do anticipate the admin fee of increasing. Those fees are collected off the total gross amount that we collect in taxes, and it's used for expenditures for the Assessment Department and the Treasury Department only. So the amount that we collect for admin fees has to be used for expenditures in those departments. And then I do anticipate an increase of 7.4%.
Giovanna, I just had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was actually on the actual and projected millage rates? Yeah, I'm sure this is about rollback, but I just wanted to double check. That would be on page six.
Six.
Yep. As I noticed from 2017 to 2019, there's a bit of rollback on the fire operating and the general operating, and also the law enforcement. So is that headly rollbacks? I just wanted to double check.
Right. And you can see on the top of the sheet, let me go back to that. Let me go back to that sheet. You can see on the top of the sheet in the blue, the headly rollback is...
Under-budget year.
Is right up there. So we did not have a headly rollback for 19. But we did have one for 17 and 18. And once you have the rollback, you cannot bring the amount back up to what it was before. You have to roll the rollback forward.
Okay. Okay.
Does that...
Yeah, I think I get it. I just want to make sure I understood it.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. And then I wanted to put in the chart that was used for the taxable values. This is the Report 4022 that is certi, this is the one that gets certified. The Assessing Department sends it in. It does get certified with the state. This is why I was telling you that last year, it's certified in March, but the exemption went to May. So the big differences in the personal property, you'll see happen in this report here. So I don't know if you want me to just go through it or if you just want to look over it. It's kind of self-explanatory. The bottom line, I did put a difference, you know, from 2017 till now. And so we increased on our real properties 39, the number, the count, 39. And the personal property went down 137 because of those exemptions that are allotted. So in the total increase, total taxable increase, even with the personal properties decreasing, we still had an increase of $94,531 and 94.
Madam Chair, I just had a question for my own, like, historical knowledge, but everyone always talks about, like, 2008 or whatever. But what would you say a ballpark taxable value that the township had was then?
In 2008?
Yeah, like before everything...
Yeah. So at our highest point, it was $1,808. And at our lowest point, it was a billion, a little bit under a billion one. So we lost about $700,000 for each mil. Huh? Yeah. It was, and in 1988, when we came on the board, it was like $880,000. And we always wanted to get to a billion because once you get to a billion, it kicks in other things from different laws. So our goal was always to get to a billion, and then we went up to a billion eight and then fell back to a billion one. So that's a, that's a good question.
Oh, yes.
I hope and pray we never go back like that.
I know. And this next one is the IFTs, industrial, the tax exempt for industrial. And that change, you can see we lost one real, and it allotted to leaving that IFT at $11,946,815. However, the loss on the IFT goes back over to the regular roll. So that's part of the increase. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you're talking about industrial facilities exemption.
Exactly. Thank you.
So when we grant them, it's for 12 years usually at 50%. So you're saying that it was lifted, the 12 years was up, and they went to 100% taxation?
Yes. So that value, the taxable value you see there, that $11 million, has gone over to the regular...
Taxable value.
Taxable value, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, these are...
Is there any questions on the taxable values and the amounts that we come up with, the estimated amounts for the budget? I mean, if you think of one later on, we can definitely, you know, come back to this. But this is kind of like an overview because everybody wants to know where we get these numbers at, so...
So the increase from the 100% tax rate for the IFTs that are now gone, is that, when I asked that question earlier, that's in that millage rate now, right?
That is correct.
The real is in that number.
So I think it was, the big one that dropped was Bozel. So Bozel and Supervisor Stubble, did you say...
General Dynamics.
Was there another one?
Changed their names, too.
Something. But the big one was Bozel that we had given that IFT to. And so that dropped, so it goes back over onto the regular tax rolls. So we'll move on to our state shared revenue. We have state shared revenue. It consists of three parts.
Can I just go back for a sec?
Yes, ma'am.
So, because we kind of just calculated out that we were up on our taxable value...
What page?
No, back to five. But, so if your increase is almost the same as increase in our taxable value, so that would say that we didn't have much growth. It was from that coming off? Because that's almost the same number. Like, if you take the TV of, on page five, if you take the taxable value, actual 1.183154 to the date, it's 1287. The difference in those is about 93...
Million.
Right. And that's, the increase was 94. So I don't know, something there's not jiving because I know we had some increase outside of just the real property.
Well, wait a minute. These numbers on page five are my estimates. So I have changed those numbers, the taxable value, based on what I think would hold out either the MTTs or the Board of Review or any other things like that. So the amount that you see there, that 1287924179, is the number that I have come up with, that I say that I think we can do our estimates on this taxable value, not the taxable value that was actually on the L-4029, which, if you look on page four, that is the $1,290,000. See right at the top on page four?
Right. But what my question is that out of that number, 94 million of that came from the increase from the IFTs going from 50 to 100. Based on that hypothetical, because I know it's estimate, I don't know if the, are the real property numbers and stuff that are on page eight, are those real or are those still estimates?
On page eight?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, let me get to that. No, those are real. Those are what your assessing director has put in and certified with the state. Those are real numbers.
Based on that, we had, not only did we not have any growth, we were negative, and I say that can't be true.
I don't know where you're seeing a negative.
Because your number is 1287924. That's what you're budgeting.
What page?
Page five. Last year was 1183. That's a real number for 18, right? If you subtract those, it's 93 million. Your total increase in real and personal property is 94 million. That means we lost, if you take that out. And I know, so your estimate must be extremely conservative to the point of saying that we didn't make any money.
No. Let me go back.
That we didn't increase a lot.
Okay. So on this page, on page nine, or, yes, page nine, if you look, the total of the real and personal was $1,289,879,967. And the 50%, which is what we collect on industrial facilities, is 77...
$773,000.
Yes. Right. So the amount, then the total that is actually matches up with your L-4029 is that $1,290...
I understand, but that's not what I'm...
But so it is an increase, so I don't, I don't...
I'm talking about page eight, where you show the total increase, which you told me were real numbers from assessing. These aren't estimates anymore, right? Page eight?
Correct.
So you have the total increase, maybe that's from, is that from 17 and not 18, the 94 million?
That's the difference between 17 and 18. So that is the increase.
So what I'm saying is that, and you said that increase came from those 50% or not? Didn't all come from the IFTs being lifted?
Oh, no. No. That goes back over to...
How much came from the IFTs being, the 50% coming off? IFTs going away. Do we know that number?
No, I'm sorry. I don't have that.
Because if we have that number, then we would know what the real increase is in actual value.
But you have to remember, you have to remember, there was also, on these personal properties, there was also a negative 137. So you had a lot going on, not just, not just this IFT going back over. You had a lot of things going on besides that. So this was added back on. You had 137 taken off. You can't, you can't pick one item and come up with the number on that.
I'm just trying to figure out how much of our increase was that 50% coming off? Because then we'll know what our real increase in growth in the township was.
Well, then I'd have to know what all the 137 that came off. I'd have to know, and I don't, I don't have that information here. That would be from the Assessing Department. We could pull something down and give you that information.
Yeah.
But if you see, you had real property that was 39. That's page eight.
Okay. Sorry.
Those were increased, the real properties, the increases in actual values, and they were added, things that added, new buildings and stuff.
And the personal properties, there was 137 count. I'm talking about count. 137 taken off.
Right. Those are like minimal, though, but anyways, so I get the number.
How do you know they're minimal?
Because none of the personal property ever adds up to very much anyways.
They do when it's a larger property like Bozel.
Yeah.
But the... Small business.
Yeah. You have a small business, but you also have a manufacturer one as well now. It's not just a small business under 400,000, I'm sorry, 40,000. That's small business, tax exempt. They also have a manufacturer's tax exempt as well.
The assessing report will have that, right?
Yes.
The assessing report shows exactly.
I am sorry, I don't have...
No, it's okay. Not yet. All right. No problem.
Okay.
I just want to clarify because I don't understand what you were, question was, Karen, is on page five under actual, it says the 1183. And then on page eight, it's the 1289. Is that what your question was?
Yeah.
That you wanted to know where the difference came? That's what you...
What I was looking at, yeah, the difference is, well, they're all, I mean, because these are estimates, these are the real assessment numbers on eight. So that says that we're going to raise one, that's $1,289,000. That's what you'll raise for one mil. What I was wondering, which is, we have an increase. I was wondering, does your increases come from either the actual values of the property, but you're limited, you get capped by the equalization requirement?
But we had a lot of new.
And then you get new, like every new house is new. So that, whatever that's value, it's totally added a roll. What I was trying to get to is like, what is that growth number? And I wanted, and so I was wondering how much of the increase of the 1289879967, how much of that was from the 50%? I mean, it's cash, but...
Right. No, I understand.
Like Bozel now pays 100%. So I was wondering how much of that total was from that cap coming off of all those IFTs?
The Assessing Department does have a book. The Assessing Department has a book that actually splits all that out. I just don't use that for my estimates. I use just the numbers that I have here. And then on page five is my estimated numbers.
So you just want me to get that? I could get that...
Yeah, I got that book. It's in that book?
It's in, all that information should be in that book that the assessor provides.
There was a total of 7.4%?
Yes.
Taxable growth?
Yes.
If I read that correctly. So we have to figure, you would like to know how much of it was...
I just want to know how much of that growth...
So Bozel.
Yeah, how much of the growth was this change? How much of the growth and the difference in the losses, this number is plus 39 minus that 137? Because then you're comparing more apples to apples.
I believe that would be in her assessing report.
It's probably going to be guessing, like, 5%, 6% versus, well, 7.4% growth. It's not, that's not what we do. Most of it looks, you know, just on there, just taking that number off.
And we can get that.
State shared revenue. All right, the state shared revenue, I'm projecting that, and not projecting. They actually give us, the state has a website. You can pull those numbers up. The amount for 2019 is $5,034,441. That's an increase of 1.6. And then I've split up the ways that they're actually calculated. You get the constitutional payments, and on there I'm showing you that they do use the 2010 population, and they have a multiplier that changes each year. The CVTRS, which is the cities, village, townships...
Revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing. Thank you very much. Revenue sharing. That one is actually, I believe that one is staying pretty much the same. That's the one that we actually have to do a dashboard on. We have to do our debt. We have to show our pension. You have to, you have to jump through a couple hoops in order to get that. And so we've done that every year, so we do get that. And then they have a supplemental for that CVTRS as well. And then that's pretty much set, that was same as it was last year. Is there any questions on revenue sharing? Okay. And then I just wanted to go over our wages and benefits. Those are the biggest expenditures that we have, except for our Sheriff's Department. And there's a contract for that, so that's not part of our wages. But our wages, there was negotiations this year, 2018, for Ask Me and the Teamsters Unions. That was, went up 3% in wages. 14B Court is still in the process of negotiations, so we believe that to be a 3% increase. So we did budget for that. And then all non-union employees got a 3% increase as well for 2018, and that's what we are projecting into 19. And that is by the contract for Ask Me and Teamsters. The fire, there's pending negotiations for 2019. We did not budget any increase at all for 19 because of negotiations. Healthcare increased 22.4%. That was a big jump.
I had a question, Madam Chair, about that increase, 22.4%. What did they justify a 22.4% increase as? That's a...
They do an experience study. They go back on an 18-month basis, and it depends on who is ill.
Experiences.
Yes, experiences. I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's like who goes to the doctor out of our surveying group.
We have, I think we have...
Surgeries.
We're experience-based, so however it's been...
So we had some, we had some people who were not well.
Understandable. But they should, you think that they would put some of that inside of their risk costs, right? Already. So whenever they insure anyone, you also calculate a risk cost as in someone getting surgery, someone falling and breaking their leg. So when I see a 22.4% increase, you know, I'm basically saying you cannot blame it because employees or anyone had to have surgeries. You should, as a healthcare provider, have your risks already assessed for certain risks against the insurance policy. I hope that makes sense.
It does make sense. However, it is not, not anything we can really do if we're experience-based and, you know, we're in a big group that helps actually lower that down. But it just, I mean, we try to negotiate. We just can't, they're not going to change it. Sometimes they can slide the 18 months a little bit, back a little bit further, but...
It was a tough year.
It was a very tough year.
For a lot of employees, retirees.
Yeah.
Okay. Cancer.
Yes.
Cancer is another one.
Yeah, we had some, we had some very, very ill people. Vision increased 15%. That's the first increase in two years. So, and 15%, it's really, it went from, I believe, the increase is like $27 because it's already really low, the annual payment. So I should have actually put a dollar amount on this one instead of just 15% because 15% seems like a lot. But I think it was like an increase of like $27 each, each person for the year. Disability, we did go to a new disability and life insurance company. We went to Dearborn National. That did decrease our disability, which is very surprising, by $97 per person. And the life insurance increased by 29 a person. So we did have a decrease and an increase. The dental increased 10%. So those are our big changes. So we go to our pension and OPEB overview. The OPEB is for the healthcare. So MERS, the employer annual contribution, increased by 1.1%. How we budgeted for MERS, we budgeted approximately 60,000 additional so that we can increase our assets and lower our liabilities, try to get that unfunded liability down a little bit. So on flat-rate employees, which are any employees hired before January 1st of 2014, we have put $15,000 per employee. And then those hired after January 2014, it's 5.16 of the wages. So like I said, we've actually made that higher than it actually is so that we could try to lower that unfunded liability. The funded ratio for 2017, there always are, actuarial reports are always two years behind. So I say 17, and that's just the one that we just, is most current. And that's 72%. Oh, so I'm sorry. And that's 72%. Oh, so I'm sorry, it went, the funded ratio went up a little bit, it's a 72%. It was at 70, I did, still did not say that right. It is at 72%, no. 73% in 17 and 72 in 16, sorry. All right, and then our, our OPEB, which is for all general, general fund and general employees, so actually everyone except for FIRE, they've actually separated FIRE out this year in this actuarial report. There was an increase of 4.89. And the funded liability, actually, we are at 51.6, so I was actually happy to see that one. Yeah. They did not change any of our assumptions on their OPEB. MERS, they didn't change any assumptions yet. That should be coming along, I believe, in 2019, when we get our stuff for 18. I believe they're going to look back and, and there might be some adjustments. I'm saying that now because when I look over to FIRE, which is our next page, you can see the increase is huge. It's a 27% increase on the actual required contribution that we need. And that is due to these new assumptions that I, I put them on here. So they lowered the assumption rate of the investment return from 7.25 to 6.5. So that was, that was the big influence on the increase that we're going to have to pay. And then also inflation, wage inflation, and then the mortality improvement scale, so that people are living longer. And then the OPEB for FIRE, that increased 22.58%, and their funded ratio did go down just a little bit. The good news here is that it is above 40%, which is the state requirement before you have to do some reports to show how you're going to fund your pension, your OPEB pension. Any questions on those? And the next pages are just a couple pages out of the actuarial report. Those reports you can get off of, they're on our website, under the human resource department, so if you ever want to look through any of the actuarial reports, they're, they're on there. So this kind of gives you the Did your printouts, do your printouts not have those on there?
I think that
I'm sorry.
It seems like it's like halvesies, like it didn't, it just cut off half of the sheet, like page 15 and 16.
Well, I will get those for you for next time. I apologize. They're, like I said, they're just sheets out of the actuarial report.
Jovanna, just had a general question, just, it's just general. And this may have been answered, I think you may have answered it already, basically on page 14, obviously, and 2003 was 90% funded, and now we're at 73. What basically, I guess you could say, could be a causation on it to get back to 90? It could never, but I don't know, I'm just, I'm just curious.
We'd have to pay, we'd have to put more than the annual required contribution in. That is set to pay to 100%, I think it is at 20 years. So if you keep paying the annual required contribution, and nothing happens, and the interest rate stays the same, and mortality, you know, if everything stays the same, it'd be paid off in 20 years. I mean, even not paid off, but you would be at 100% funded. But that's usually
That usually doesn't happen.
No.
Just curious. Thank you.
So we'll go to the last page. And this is just a, just a summary of the OPEB, you know, in 17 and 18, and then 19, and then different changes that we have there. If you have any questions on that, you can let me know. It's just kind of a visualization, so you can see each one of the funds, the departments, how we have them split up. Okay, so that concludes the overview. If you have any questions, like I said, we can go over them now or next meeting, if you have something, please ask, and I'll get copies of those pages that are missing for you.
Thank you, Jovanna. Try to hit that, right, oh yeah.
As I walk away, did it change? Let's see. Okay, so we'd like to start. Our 2019 proposed budget narrative, this is for Fund 208, which is parks. It's very, very small. You see, there's only one revenue stream, and that is from the racquetball, volleyball courts at the rec center. So all of those revenues that we get for those items go into the parks, and then we have elected officials that get paid from that. And membership dues. So, and as I go through any of these, please, you know, ask questions as we go. It's line by line. Doing this a little different than last year, I'm not doing the classified, classifications, we're just going to go straight line. Yes, sir?
Not that it's a lot of money, Jovanna, but why is handball courts in parks and not in recreation?
That's just what they had decided to do to try to fund this. We just pulled that aside because we can keep track of it, and so we put that in there. Because you do need a fund, you need some revenues coming in in order to pay the small amounts that we have for the elected officials. Because you need a revenue stream somewhere for it.
I'm not sure, because I wasn't here when they created the park commission, but my understanding is by having it in the park fund stand, that that's the only fund they're over. If you put it, that's the fund that the park commission has, as opposed to putting it in 212 or whatever funds that they had in the past. So this was set up a long time ago to work that way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure. I just didn't realize it. That's how we paid the elected officials, so I get it now.
Oh, okay.
I thought we just had a
It's been a year.
A line item in the budget set aside to pay whatever number of commissioners there were by the number of meetings for the year.
Well, you do pay them, so that's the expenditure, but the revenues coming in are from the handball courts? Am I not following? I'm sorry.
No, I just thought we took it out of general fund to do it. I didn't, that's where I just lost it for a second.
So as you can see, there is a line-by-line description of the narrative. Most of it is from me. But do we have any questions on the expenditures? To be simple. The last page, I did, I did kind of rework this to show you the budget amount for the ending fund balance. And this one, you can see they're pretty well-funded for what they do. Okay, our next fund. We are Fund 248, which is our housing and business inspection fund. This fund, the big changes on this fund, we have, I have Mike Razik here with me. He oversees this fund, as well as 249, and the 266 law enforcement, and the 893, which is nuisance abatement. So he'll be here, and we can ask him specific questions about any changes to these funds. The major change on this one is we did take out 25% of the wages and fringes of the ordinance officers, and put them into the law enforcement fund under the ordinance department, because at least 25% of their job is regular ordinance work. So that's the major change we have for this account. So do anybody have any questions over the narrative on the revenues? For Mike, these are like estimates, just based on historical estimates that we have. There was another change that we had, I'm sorry, did you have a question? There was another change that we have, the changes in the narratives in yellow are the ones that we added since you had the draft. So there was an item in here for rental inspectors expenditure. And what that was for, was for any of the building inspectors who were actually doing rental inspections. And we were going to, you know, have the housing inspection fund pay back the building, since they were doing work that really wasn't building code. So we didn't have any of those this year. The stuff that they actually do, according to Mike, the building inspectors, they do some rental things on the outside, which still is part of the building inspection. So we didn't have to move anything. So we're just going to take that line item out. We'll also take it out of the 249 as well. And then, of course, all the insurances we updated. The only thing I did not update was the dental, but it looks like we already did the estimate at 10%, so I may not even have to change that. I did not look at that. I did not get those rates in until the day I sent these out, so, but I will make sure that those come in correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It was just, this is not, it was just a typo, Jovanna, on the motor pool miscellaneous repair line.
What, which one is it?
It's 248, 248, 000, 939, 031. Just motor pools spelled wrong.
Oh, it sure is.
Not that
Moto pool.
Moto pool.
Yeah.
I will change that. Thank you very much.
If I may, could I just, I just wanted to bring something to the board's attention regarding the multifamily rental inspection aspect of this budget. You will recall, we budgeted to jump into multifamily, that's the apartment inspections, in earnest in 2017. We budgeted $90,000 in revenue, and we brought in nothing because of staffing circumstances and other circumstances, we were very late to initiate that. We did get all of the apartment communities registered by then, however. We committed to jumping with both feet into it this year, and we maintained that estimate of $90,000 revenue. To date, we've inspected about half of the apartment units. We've brought in 116,000 in multifamily revenue so far this year, and that aspect of the program is definitely on track now. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I'm certain that that probably increases and enhances the quality of life for people that live in those multifamily.
If you're interested, we can run reports on the actual number of code violations that have been cited. It would, it's astronomical. The other thing on this budget I just wanted to mention briefly, there's three line items that reflect revenue that are collected for delinquent invoices that get rolled over to the winter tax bill. One for multifamily, one for single-family rentals, and one for vacant properties. Those are truly just estimates. I provided a report on the dollar value of delinquent invoices in those three categories at the end of September. For the clerk's office to submit a report to the county, it totaled about $80,000. Divided between all those categories, the unknown is how many of that will get paid by the time the rollover occurs in early November, and what may become delinquent between now and then. So we've just done our best to estimate what that revenue might look like when it comes in with tax collection next spring.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I just have one question. I know we went over the vision benefit increase in the last piece of that, but I just wonder, it says 15%. Do you have just a ballpark number, Jo, for what that, what is that?
Of what percentage?
Like what, 15% equals how many dollars?
Oh, of the total?
I think it was about $27 or $29.
I just wonder, like this, I don't know if this is the time to discuss it or not, but I've recently been thinking about like my personal vision insurance, and like, half of the people that, I would just be interested to know, out of the township people that we employ, how many people use glasses and contacts? Because typically, like, your vision insurance doesn't always cover contacts anyways, so if it would be something to consider in the future as a way to not only just, you know, save us funds, but also provide a better service to our employees, to just give them like a lump sum, this is the money that we've set aside for you to use for vision versus having a traditional vision insurance. So like, just big picture, think about it.
I think for per person, per year, it's like 189.
That's it?
Yeah, it's not, it's, that's why I said, I should have put a dollar amount instead of the percentage, because it's so small.
Because I knew you said that about the dental. I just didn't know vision was
Yeah, vision is really, that's, that's our, that's our least fee that we have.
Well, and then because health insurance always covers a vision exam.
That's it for some?
So just something to
So for like future negotiation?
Yeah.
Of a purchase differently, lump sum versus?
To not, you know, to have a mutual interest, like we would save money, but also would provide them a better, what they're looking for, maybe because they want contacts or something like that.
Monica? Couple of points. Thank you. Madam Chair, who is the visiting provider currently? I guess that's
VSP?
Okay. And VSP usually covers, because I have it, contacts, glasses, bifocals. They also cover progressive lenses, and also various tents. And then on top of that, they also cover when you have to get the invisible line. So, and the rates are usually really good. Those, it can be anywhere from 50 to 70%, but it's a lot cheaper than pan out of pocket.
Any upgrades are not covered. The ones I have now, bifocals, invisible, scratch resistant, I paid out of my own pocket, I paid $350.
It's a certain amount.
So I paid, so they only covered, they only covered a part of the frame. Yeah, it's, it's, it's something, but it's not, it's not a lot. And Blue Cross only will cover if there's an injury to your eye or an allergy. Yes, it doesn't cover regular
Get us off linked up to each other. Interesting approach.
It is. All right, do we have any questions? Anybody on the individual lines? All right, then I would like to move right on to the back page that actually gives a breakdown of the fund, the ending fund balance. Now, the fund balances that I have on here, you can see there's a blue line. So that's where the amended budget is, the numbers, so that's a projection. We're saying that we're going to be using appropriated funds, which is prior year fund balance. So you have to take that off. That's why that's red, it's a negative. Take that off, and you have to move that portion, that 56,485, over to beginning of 19's budget. So we're talking, not actual right now, because I don't know how the year is going to end. We might not better, you know, that may adjust that. Right now, we're talking budget to budget. And what I'm saying is you have to move the 56,485 over. We need 19,714 for 19 in order to budget the operating expenses with the revenue. So I'm saying it right now, they'll end the fund balance of 36,771, which is 12% of the revenues. So that's where they stand. That's what that last page is. Is there any questions? Yes, Monica?
Just a quick question. Does this one have a recommended fund balance or no? Because this one
We like to keep them all at 15.
Okay.
So it's not really far off. I don't get too worried, 12 on this one. And we did, we did move 25% of the wages and fringes from here over to law enforcement.
Okay.
So, that helped that a little bit.
All right, thank you.
And I think that'll only get better, you know, as we start doing more of those multifamily We'll jump into Fund 249. That is our building fund, a building inspection fund, I should say. And I really don't have a whole lot on this one right now, except for, like I said, we're going to remove that contra amount that we were going to get funds in from 248. We removed that completely this year because we didn't need it. And also, there is a vacant chief building official position that's open. We did a budget for that. We budgeted 19 for that and we also budgeted for a family fringes. So, just FYI, I think that's through the notes of what we did. Mike, if you would like to make some additional comments, please?
This fund is, relies exclusively on permit fee revenue. So, when we do our revenue projections, we look at a couple of different things. We look at the current state of the economy, the rate at which home renovation projects are coming in, the rate at which new development is being proposed and constructed. And then, we also look closely at what's in the hopper through the planning commission for new development coming in. And then, we try to make predictions, which I never to rely on what I would consider high-ticket item anomalies, like a tech park at the ACM facility, which may be a high-ticket building permit per se. No development fees go into this budget. This is all strictly vertical construction. Taking all that into account, we looked at what we believe will be coming in 2019. There's two new hotels in the engineering phase right now, Hampton Inn and a Comfort Inn. There's a Holiday Inn Express that's been proposed and is in discussions. We've got things like a new gas station proposed, electric vehicle charging stations at some retail parking lots, R&amp;L carriers, potential expansion project, of course, the continuation of the ACM project. They've deferred a lot of things that they plan to build this year till next year or 2020 because of their current situation. Yankee Air Museum is under pressure. They've been told they're being evicted from Willer Run Airport's Hangar 1 by the end of next year. And so, they'll have nowhere to store their planes that have to be kept indoors. And so, our staff has been working with them, with our consultants. They need to start construction very soon and they've decided to do an interior build out of the existing building to build some interior hangars there. So, that's planned and that'll be becoming to the planning commission soon. Tonight's agenda, there's a conditional rezoning proposal that would land in a new tennis training facility in the township. And then, on the residential side, Lombardo Homes is still building. They'll be coming with plans soon for, they're finishing Majestic Lakes, three phases. They'll be proposing what will be known as Creekside Village North, Merit and Tuttle Hill, that vacant land behind that pool that kind of sits all by itself there. And then, they've got a purchase agreement on another old abandoned development site on the north side of Merit, just west of Tuttle Hill. River Grove condominiums are being completed and the list goes on. Nautica Point is still under construction. So, we take all that into account when we try to estimate the revenues. The other thing we did that's new, I'd say we, to some extent, have partnered with our building staff because of all the different disciplines that require different certifications from the state. So, we're investing in some training time to cross-train our staff. For instance, our electrical inspector recently was able to obtain his building inspector credentials. He's working on building plan review. Our, one of our other building inspectors is training and to test to get his mechanical inspection certifications. And so, we're trying to do a lot of creative things in order to continue providing services without the need to add staff as things continue to progress upwards into the future. The vacant building, chief building official position, that was vacated just a short time ago by resignation. We have an interim agreement with a contractor who's filling that void now. And we have a very seasoned, qualified employee who's off on long-term disability, who I've been meeting with regularly, and there's a desire to come back if he's physically able. And we would love to be able to promote from within if that circumstance ever plays out. So, we're thinking about all these things to try to move it forward the best we can.
Just had a quick question. Madam Chair, I know at one point in time, we put out a RFP for the Seaver Farms property. Did anything happen with that? I was just curious. No?
No, that did not move forward and it's, it's still ripe for development, though.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one thing, I think, was it last year that we changed our permit style? So, like if you were building a home and had 20 electrical things, you had to pay for all 20 instead of just a one flat rate? Was that last year?
It was a couple of years ago. We did have flat rates for everything and.
Yeah. Right, you know what I'm talking, like we changed it so that we have more stuff?
I do.
And that was like successful, I assume, and especially now.
Yes.
Okay.
I would say we are more accurately covering the cost of providing those services, both in the planner view phase, the field inspection, and the clerical support.
Yeah.
That it takes to push all these moving parts around, as well as billing, invoicing, collections, so on and so forth.
Okay, so the fund balance page, you could see from here that we are very healthy in this account. It's at 113%. Okay, the next one was going to be hydro. Mike Serenin is not here right now, so I'm going to skip over this. Maybe he'll get here in a minute and I'll come back to that. Is that okay? We'll go ahead and get Mike's other two.
Yeah.
That we have? Okay. Just going to go through that. We'll come, we'll come back to them. Okay. So, our next fund is going to be the law enforcement fund. It's our big fund. It has a millage for our police. We did have a change on here, not only with the 25% coming from the housing inspection over to our law enforcement, but we also hired a full-time custodian. We did have a part-time custodian in that position. We hired, there are, there's two that'll be splitting time. So, there's one full-time person. There's two part-time people, but one full-time position. The other part-time is, the wages portion of it is in the building fund like the other custodial people? Does that make sense?
And just for the board's information, since we've invested to upgrade the Holmes Road substation, we've got deputies, a couple of reporting to work there. There is plans to increase that. And so, the maintenance and custodial demands for that building have gone up. And we've got vehicles, OCS vehicles budgeted in this budget in the ordinance department. And when those cars go down currently, we're taking staff off of scheduled inspections to shuttle those back and forth for repairs and estimates and whatnot. And this position, we'll be able to take that off of those people and they'll be able to continue with what they're paid to do. So, we're trying to make the best use of those resources that have become available.
All right. So, the biggest, the biggest expense in this fund is our contract with our Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. And I will let Mike go over that with you if you have any questions on that.
Just to refresh everyone's memory, in 2018, when the budgets were adopted in December of 17, we had budgeted to add two more police service units, which would have taken us from the existing 35 to 37. After that, the board, during the period of discussion, we decided collectively to jump that up to three, to 38. The request was sent in writing to the sheriff's department that the board decided or chose and desired to add three more police service units. And if you recall, the discussion was with the addition of those three, the departments, as I understand it, their total allocation of sworn would then also add a sergeant's position, which we were told would more than likely spend most of their time working in our jurisdiction with no additional expense to us. So, that request was sent in. It was, the three new position control numbers plus the sergeant were approved by the county board of commissioners in March of 2018. The resolution said it was effective July 1st. The sheriff's department, Lieutenant Morocco and others have been keeping us abreast of their efforts to recruit and train new sworn officers, as well as retain new recruits that they've hired and trained as well. They've expressed a situation where they're having a lot of difficulty attracting qualified candidates because of a shortage of qualified applicants, and this is nationwide. I did do a lot of online research to vet that and I was able to confirm and verify that many police departments across the country are experience, experiencing the same phenomenon and situation now. And there's a variety of economic and social reasons for all that, that you're probably well aware of. Currently, as of earlier this week, of our 35, three have been off injured for quite some time. Some of that, a lot of that has been filled by overtime at the county's expense. There are currently seven recruit deputies with training officers in training. Almost all of them are assigned here in Ypsilanti Township because that's where the training officers generally are working. They have a slew of others that are in background investigation, conditional job offer, and then pending acceptance of final job offers. On top of all that, and Trustee Eldridge would, I'm sure, appreciate this, like never before, there is now huge competition between police departments. For instance, Washtenaw Community College, just a couple of weeks ago, graduated an academy class. Every department was there recruiting. The, the top five or 10% of that class, there was stiff competition. Ann Arbor PD is offering cash bonuses if you sign on the dotted line and make a commitment. And it's just gotten crazy. And so, the sheriff's department is doing their best to compete in that environment. So, having said all that, on tonight's agenda is a four-year extension of our current police contract. When it originally came to us, it did not include the addition of the three additional PSUs that we previously had asked for because they hadn't not been able to fill those at this time. I asked them to include it and they agreed to do that so that if it's approved tonight, it will increase our contract level to 38. And there's an attached letter of understanding that would protect both the sheriff's office and the township. And it essentially says, we're increasing the contract from 35 to 38. We all acknowledge that those positions have not necessarily been hired, trained, or filled at this time. And so, the county will not invoice us for those additional PSUs until each one is specifically filled and confirmed in writing. And we will not accumulate what's called banked hours because of the absence of a person on staff. Banked hours is simply, when there's someone off injured, those 40 hours a week get put into a bank and at the end of the year, it's either refunded to us or it's used for special targeted overtime with our approval, depending on what it is. We agree on what that will be. So, it's a resource that's made available and we're entitled to that. So, that letter of understanding is attached to the contract. It's acceptable from my point of view and from the sheriff's point of view. And if you agree, then it'll be before you tonight as well. But that would at least put our contract at 38 and relieve us of having to come back to you for as many as potentially three more times. If they add number 36, they can't bill us for it until the contract's amended. Likewise, 37 and 38. So, I think this would protect everybody involved and get us where we need to be. And we're hoping it won't be long before those positions are permanently filled. So, that's the background on the PSU levels.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay. So, I want to make sure I have it correct. So, there's 38 PSUs right now, but then.
No, there's 35.
35. Okay, got you. Thank you. Because the three are kind of on hold at the moment, I guess is a good way to say it. All right, so 35. And then, you said five are injured or on some type of injured duty or whatever it is? Okay, all right.
We get a report from Lieutenant Morocco every Monday. This past Monday's report showed three of our contracted employees assigned here are off on long-term injury.
Okay, so that'd be 32. And then, then, okay, the seven in training, does that go against that 35 number or no?
No, they are not billed to us or counted towards our staffing until they're fully trained and certified to work by themselves.
Okay. So, well, we can't, yeah, obviously, there's none, you know, nothing you can do about folks injured. So, right now, it's, as it stands, we have 32 officers. Would that be, or our PSUs? Is, and I guess my question is, is that enough for the population in total?
Let me answer, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
No, not even close.
All right.
Well, I concur. However, there is, there's so many different ways to measure, those metrics are spread out across the board. You will hear in some corners, people will say, oh, you need one sworn officer per thousand population. That would equate to, what, 55, 56 sworn officers? Now, that includes everyone from the lowest level sworn officer, either a patrol officer or a sheriff's deputy in our case, all the way up to the chief of police and any administrative staff person who is a sworn officer. When those FBI statistics come out and it shows the number of sworn officers in every police department in the country, that includes everybody in the offices, in the high rises that are sworn, but they're not actually on the, they're not boots on the ground per se. That's one way that people look at it. That is not a legitimate measure because the number of sworn officers you need, it varies depending on, is it a densely populated urban environment? How many people come into your jurisdiction to work every day? What is the?
Call volume.
Call volume. What is the nature of your environment? Is it all highly dense urban? Is it suburban? Is it rural? We have a mixture of all of those things. We have a lot of people that come to work here. We have a lot of residents who leave and work elsewhere during the day. So, the number of people in our jurisdiction, the number of people on our roadways that get involved in crashes and road rage and all that stuff, it fluctuates literally hour to hour. The state sometimes publishes surveys of what the averages are across different jurisdictions in Michigan, but they're not, they're not weighted or changed for the environment of that. You know, Charlevois, Michigan doesn't need as many sworn officers per population as the city of Detroit does. So, you know, you have to take all that into account. I don't know what the number, the optimal, if there were no outside considerations, but I agree with Trustee Eldridge that we probably, we could use more. How many more, I couldn't tell you at this point, though.
I guess, yeah, just a comment on that because population could increase. So, if it's, well, 38 is the number that hopefully it will be.
Now, remember, that 38 PSUs gives us 38 sheriff's deputies, currently six sergeants and a lieutenant. So, we're at, what, 45 sworn officers? We're not that far off the mark, but we're not quite there.
All right, thank you.
At our height, 38 was our height, 40, 38 was our height.
No, at the peak, up until 2008, we had 44 sheriff's deputies, seven sergeants and a lieutenant. So, we were 52 at our peak.
It was almost the same number in the city and they both dwindled. We've done a better job, I think, of getting it back up where it should be.
Oh, absolutely.
Mike, I just have a couple of questions. If I can, is this the time to ask them on the line items?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Line item 719. Line item seven-one-nine-zero-zero-zero, it's health insurance. I just see there was nothing for previous years. Not that it's a big amount, but I was just wondering, now there's an eighty-three hundred dollar. Again, not that that's a big amount, I'm just curious as to why there was nothing previous.
Is the, is the first number, is the two-six-six-three-oh-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's because we have, we have two individuals who are in that department, that would be Mike himself and an admin person that do not have...
Just transferred, oh, okay.
They do not have health insurance, they do the buyout, so you wouldn't see that. So that one full-time custodian that I was talking to you about, all the fringes would be going in here. So that's what changed that.
And then the second one, I just have to find where I was.
Oh, sorry.
On the eighteen amended, we had four hundred thousand in overtime, and this one, we've actually dropped it by fifty thousand. Is that where we want to head, or do we want to keep it there or increase it until we get those new deputies on the road?
I did not lowball that number, if that's what you're asking.
No, I just...
Here's what I did. I looked at our current overtime spending, taking into account the number, we've got about ten percent of our allocated staffing off injured, which is somewhat normal for a police organization, say, three out of thirty-five or four out of thirty-five. You're going to have that pretty much at any time, whether it's injured, long-term disability, sick, or maternity leave, family leave, all military leave, you're always going to have somebody gone. Our contract says we cover the first two working weeks if we choose to fill those on overtime, and after that, the county fills it, but they don't bill us for that. So I can tell you, for instance, last month, I get it, I get an Excel report every month that shows all the overtime spent in our jurisdiction. Last month, it was about ninety-six thousand dollars. We were billed for less than thirty.
So, Mike, if, help me to understand, so we would cover the first two weeks if Officer A went out?
As a backfill, if you would.
Right, as a backfill. But after the two weeks, well, let me back, the first two weeks, we would determine if we wanted the overtime?
Correct.
And we would pay for it?
After that, they must fill it at their expense.
They must fill it. Okay, that was going to be my question. Do they then get the autonomy to decide what is going to be filled and what is not?
No, sir. And if they can't fill it on overtime...
Is that where we then bank the hours?
We bank the hours, and we use those for special targeted overtime with our approval, or it's refunded at the end of the year.
Okay, and then the only reason...
And we've instructed them, we don't want refunds, we want the service.
Right. The only reason I'd ask about the four down to three fifty is I noticed that in, I'm sorry, in seventeen, we were at almost four oh four. In sixteen, we were down in that three fifty range, and we made a drastic jump up. And that was my only question. If we had to make a drastic jump up then, are we shorting ourselves by making a drastic jump down at this time?
If I truly anticipated getting billed for a lot more overtime, I would budget for it.
Okay. I know I'm using one up here, hawking for every penny, I'm trying to get you to spend more money right now.
I'm with you, and I would. I think this is the right number unless some unforeseeable change occurs.
And the only reason I ask is, I mean, as you know, we're probably the only two in the room that understands. I just don't want to see somebody get hurt because we're short-staffed.
The flip side of that is...
Or put residents at risk because we're short-staffed.
I completely agree. The flip side is, though, with the number of people off injured, our three is not, that's not the whole Sheriff's Department. I don't, I think the last number I heard was seventeen countywide. Other jurisdictions are in the same boat. So the downside to that, Trustee Eldridge, is the forced overtime, and the current state of affairs is that the patrol officers and now even the command officers are being forced on a regular basis to the point of saturation, which creates an unsafe environment for them.
I get it. Then my last two, I promise. Line eight-three-zero-zero-zero-four is a community work. Again, no previous expenditures, and now it's at eighty?
I'm glad you brought that up because that was one of the new things I wanted to discuss. This is actually, rolls into another line item as well.
Is that the school collaboration?
Nope, school collaboration is proposed to stay as-is.
Okay, because I saw there's nothing expended for it right now. That was line eight-three-one-zero-zero-five. There had been a twenty-seven. It looks like maybe you tied it into one below.
That's not the school collaboration, that's the...
Or the community service, I'm sorry.
That's the summer youth employment program.
Okay.
Those are the two things that I'd like to discuss because this is my, this is my recommendation and proposal, and it may not be popular, but I'm proposing it, and it's ultimately up to this board to decide. This year, we budgeted and spent twenty-seven thousand dollars to fund this summer youth program. I'm still waiting for a report on how and where those, those hours of community service were spent with the eight youth that were employed. I've studied the, the program, which is a countywide program, and as far as I know, as far as I can tell, we are the only local municipality that is a contracting partner with the Sheriff's Office that is giving money to them for them to hire these youths. Every other participant, and there are, there are dozens and dozens of participants, it's all either private industry or nonprofit corporations, and they're not contributing funding, they're contributing job opportunities. And so I spoke with residential services, and I spoke with others, and we've increased, this is not my area of expertise, but I've been told we've increased this year the number of seasonal job opportunities here at the township, and I am proposing to eliminate funding for the summer youth program as it is currently shaped, where we give money to the Sheriff's Department for them to hire these youth, and in exchange or in return, let's become an official partner with this summer youth program by offering job opportunities to qualifying youth, the same as through Michigan Works, the same as all the other participating corporations, including some local governments do. Everyone else does it that way, and it makes sense to me to do it that way. What I'm trying to achieve is there's a huge demand for roadside trash pickup and trash pickup in our public parks here in the township. We've relied on two different things to get that done, one being the summer youth program. It's, it's my belief that that program is being steered more towards other types of community benefit work and mentoring, which is incredibly important, but I think that can be accomplished through our participation by offering job opportunities instead of cash to another government organization. And in return, I think the way to pick up the trash, get a handle on this situation is to get some dedicated service hours through the Sheriff's Department's jail work program. If you recall, for those of you that were here, you'll remember, and if you weren't, you'll, you'll know now, that we used to pay to have our own fourteen-B district court work program. So that, what that means is when someone was sentenced or they were convicted of a misdemeanor crime, and these were all generally low-level offenses, nonviolent offenses, the court would give the offender the opportunity to either pay the fine and the court costs or do a commensurate hour, number of hours of community service, and they could do that through a nonprofit group like a church, or they could do it through the jail work program. We had our own. We paid for a corrections officer. We had our own work program. The people reported here, they worked in the township, primarily trash pickup, but other community things, like when West Willow's picnic was scheduled, they'd go out and clean up and beforehand and afterwards, they'd do painting projects at the parks and so on and so forth, things that, that we helped organize and, and request. So that was the thought, to increase our ability to keep the community clean, let's do it through this program where there's corrections officers with the proper vehicles to keep the roadside workers safe, to get the stuff done, and we can help drive where that's done and when that's done, and keep the, keep our participation in this summer youth program at a high level by offering job opportunities. And since we've increased them this year, I think there's capacity to do that, whether it's at eight or some number higher or lower would be up to others to, to determine. The downside of my idea was, I did talk with Magistrate Nelson, and he had talked it over with Judge Pope, and what we learned is that we're not referring, offenders are not choosing to do community service as much as they used to since the economy's improved. What the courts are finding is they'd rather, more people are opting to pay than to do the community service, either because they can afford to or they just choose to, but the numbers are way down in terms of participating individuals. The other downside was, the court experienced some logistical problems when we had our own work program, where people would show up late because they missed the bus or they didn't get their ride in time, and they would just loiter in the court hallway all day long because the work program crew had already left out into the community for the day. So it caused some logistic disruption problems in the court. I was told tonight by the magistrate that fourteen-B is the highest contributing court in the county in terms of the number of people referred to the countywide jail work program that's operated out of Hogback. That's the same program that offers the free snow removal for seniors and disabled people throughout the community on a sign-up basis, and they do primarily trash collection and other community-eligible projects. And so I've begun the discussion with the Sheriff's Department, would, right now, we get service upon request for special purposes, and we'd like dedicated, reliable, consistent, predictable service on a regular basis. So I've asked them, would you entertain if we, if having our own work program here again is not the good solution for everyone involved, can we give a contribution, funding contribution in return for scheduled, reliable, predictable services in Ypsilanti Township where we direct it to occur? And I'm, I'm waiting to see how they react to that. I put a number of eighty thousand in there because I didn't really know what to expect.
So the...
The court work program was eliminated in two thousand and eight when the economy tanked and we had to lay off police officers. We first eliminated that, as well as the community service officers and the animal control officer, before we cut cops to try to reduce the number that we had to cut. So it's been a decade.
So if I was to say in short, this eighty thousand, we would give to the sheriff as our contribution, and they would provide workers back to us on a consistent, steady basis?
Yes, and I would, I budgeted that based on thinking the court may want to have its own, but I think it would be much less if we contributed to theirs.
So whether it's ten, eighty, or a hundred and eighty, how, how do we ensure that we, or is there something in it that you're looking for these workers to be Ypsilanti Township residents? I'm just asking, is that the end goal, is to try and put people back in our community or give them a chance to work? Are we going to give that money to a third party, the sheriff, and they go out and find workers from wherever?
We need consistent, reliable, and predictable trash cleanup on our roadsides and our parks. That's one of the number-one complaints through Neighborhood Watch.
No, no, I get all that. I agree with all, I agree with everything you're saying.
And right now, we're struggling to provide those services?
I guess, my question is, rather than give it to another entity, why would we not just post and promote it and we hire them ourselves? Why would we go out and give it to another entity?
Here's why I...
Because we lose control over the process.
I understand your concern. The reason I would suggest this is, they're on the side of a road, they're picking up garbage, and I think there's a high liability in terms of injury. The work program has been doing this for a very long time. They've got the vehicles with the emergency lighting, they've got supervisors that make sure they're properly high-visibility marked with clothing, that they stay where they're supposed to be, and they help keep them safe. And just like our police contract, they would provide that liability protection, and they already have this down to a science, and they do it on a regular basis. That was my, my thinking.
Yeah, and I agree with all that, I just didn't, okay. Would these be year-round, twelve months?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And I don't know if it's, if it would be an acceptable proposal. I'm trying to get, get us there if that's something the board wishes to, to do. But again, it's your decision.
And they provide all the oversight, supervision, I guess, if I was on the other side of the table, my question would be, why would I want to do it?
Well, they're basically, we're going to do what we used to do. We're going to pay them to give us community workers, right?
Well...
Have we not paid them before?
Yes, we did. We contracted for that previously.
We did. We hired a corrections officer and paid for the van, the vehicle...
Van, right.
And the trash bags and all the other...
We have a separate agreement or something with that.
We did. It was a separate side contract. And all those workers were fourteen-B court offenders who chose work program.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Were you done?
I didn't know if you were, were you finished?
Well, I just wanted to point, assuming what Magistrate Nelson informed me of was correct, which I have no reason to think it's not, if fourteen-B is referring more offenders to the countywide work program that works out of the jail on Hogback, that provides services in all twenty townships on all five cities, so we're competing for those services where they have everybody else that has needs. A lot of those offenders, I'm sure, would be offenders that came through our court, whether they were township residents, I don't know. They committed their crime here, though.
Right.
And we could get workers from other jurisdictions that may or may not live here, I don't know.
So we're not targeting youth specifically, if it's just workers? I guess that's where I was headed when I asked...
No, it's not, it's the workers that are sentenced to a work program.
Sure.
It's not workers that they're hiring. It's, it's only people who were sentenced, it's usually a misdemeanor, it's not...
These workers are not paid. They're doing their community service, they work off their...
That's separate from the youth program.
I, I think, this is just my personal opinion, but I think the township would be better represented, and we'd be in a better position to participate in this youth employment program if we offered employment opportunities and set aside a, a number, and said, this number is set aside for...
Well, we do that. I thought that's what we were doing, that's what the program was about.
No, but we do that...
No, our, our participation currently is, we give the Sheriff's Department twenty-seven thousand dollars, and they use that to pay the youth that are participating to do...
Supervision and...
And I don't know what...
But the program started out, they were supposed to work here.
Yes, they do.
Work in the, your eye, I mean, it was twofold.
So it's...
None of them get assigned here? None of them work for like...
No, 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 they do.
Oh, okay.
I just don't have a report on what they, the work that they've done.
I'm sorry, Heather, I apologize.
But it's my, I'm sorry, it's my belief that, based on talking with, had a conversation with Mr. Gundy, who supervised it this year, and I don't think it was the trash, roadside trash and that type of work was not the prevalent activities that the youth were involved in, and so...
They're trying to teach you the skill.
Absolutely.
And to work at a, a job, and there's a lot of other businesses involved, EMU...
I can, I'll send you all the link to the official summer youth program website.
You have, you know, it's a training...
There's a list of dozens and dozens of mostly private corporations. The city of Ypsilanti participates with job opportunities, and I think it's a good way to go.
Heather.
How many work here and where they work?
I've asked for that report, and I'm, I'm waiting for it.
Do they work here?
My other question, Mike, was, will this come, like, I, I'm not saying I, like, it sounds awesome, but like, that's also based on a lot of like, I thinks and I mights and maybes. So would that whole idea come back to you?
Yes.
It would be a, it would be a separate contract agreement that would come to you for approval, yes.
Okay. That's my only question.
Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions, especially if we're talking about the, if it's okay, the program prior to the cuts in two thousand and eight. One of the things that the program that was previous is that they also deliver, like, newsletters inside of various neighborhoods, because that was one of, I know, it actually used to deliver our newsletter in West Willow with the work program. And obviously, you spoke about trash, and if I can have a point of privilege, that is something that needs to be addressed inside the community as a whole, and in various locations. It's just about, you know, how it looks to people, whether that's they're coming in and visiting for the first time or they're living here. And I know that prior to the, this type of program being cut, obviously due to budgetary constraints, one of the things that the work program workers did was pick up trash. So my question is twofold. Would the, even though these people may be supervised by, on a daily basis by the Sheriff's Office, would the township have obviously some say-so in regards to some of the things that they do? that they do? Like, for instance, maybe going back to some of those tasks like newsletter delivery and robust trash pickup? That's, that's my question.
Yes. So some of the first communication when I first approached the sheriff about this, there was a request for a scope of services, like what, what do you want for service? So we talked about those exact same things. But that was under the original idea of restarting our own work program here. But as I talked, like I said, as I talked with the court officials more, it didn't make much sense under the current environment. But it would make sense. Right now, we can call and request, hey, we've got a special request, this twelve blocks of Grove Road needs trash pickup. We get on a list and they get out here as soon as they're able, they do that. But I think, to echo your sentiments, we need consistent service on a regular, daily basis. It may not be forty hours a week, it may only be twenty or twenty-five, but we need something. And the idea was if we funded that in the form of a contract with a minimum number of scheduled hours per week with our input on where they go and what they do, that may get the job done.
I was gonna say, I think Monica's right and supervises some, and it worked, the community work program worked really well and we did exactly that. There is a special event or they need their newsletter. We got communities coming in, guests to certain parks. Because I remember we, they were all over the place and stuff. I don't think we, I don't remember what our contract was, but I guess you can dig it up.
It was a decade ago and it was almost sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I don't know, we could, yeah, see what the services are, but that's separate from the budget items that you want to do for, is that going to be a program that we're going to do through our parks and rec, to hire youth versus contracting through this other, so?
Yeah.
And that's, that's in your budget or is that in?
Currently, the police budget is giving money to the sheriff's department and they're the employer for the youth.
But it could be through your budget if it was framed in that same way, right? We said we're going to hire twenty youth, high-risk youth from, throughout the township that either academic issues or issues with juvenile, because that's what that program was supposed to be in order to cut down on the crime and kids. So I, I, you know, I know that this is just a budget thing, but maybe, but it's not, but that's not budgeted. You're not budgeting these, for these jobs, for the kids.
Correct.
He's recommending that we do it through our parks, just like the city of Ypsilanti and other communities are doing.
If you go to the official, and I'll send you all the link after the name-
We're the only ones paying.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I know, I know the other ones are doing that. What I'm saying is I would like to see, and I'm only one board member, for you to budget in yours and make it like a crime prevention kind of thing that we look for twenty youth or fifteen youth that are identified through the sheriff's department or through the schools as kids, because they're identified, I mean, as high risk.
It comes through Michigan, it works.
Yeah, or Michigan Works sends us twenty kids to employ and that we could, you know, and they could still do their mentoring through them and then they could work for us at an hourly rate or something, but that we'd still stay focused on-
Well, if I-
At least some of the, you know, that group, that group, because I do think it's been successful, because when it started, it was a part of a solution, probably a tang prong solution to the craziness that was going on with the youth in particular during the summers. I remember we were having those fights and girls fighting and boy, I mean, I mean, and last couple summers, you know, so, I don't know that that's the reason, but it probably was a part of many reasons. I know they started the mothers program.
We won't vote on this budget for a while, but let me send you the link to the official youth employment website. And you look at the list of participating employers, we're not listed. We're nowhere there, on there.
Because we're not an employer, we're just a-
We do not offer job opportunities.
We're a donor.
Washtenaw County does, other local governments do. Most of them are private employers or nonprofit, non-government employers. And I think it would make sense for us to just fall in line with what everyone else is doing and offer job opportunities.
Frankly, I was totally confused because I thought that when we gave that money, that was for them to work and some, they were going to go to class and leadership mentors, but then they were going to work in the township, so-
That's correct.
I missed the contract totally over the last couple of years.
No, you didn't. You didn't. That's what it says. All I'm saying is, I, as I sit here now, I can't tell you-
No one's got assigned here.
I, I believe they were. I can't tell you how many, where they were, or how much they worked here, because I don't have that report yet.
They didn't work for us, is what I'm hearing.
Right.
Because I know, I seen them all the time at the county, when I would go to training and stuff, I would see them in vans and they had those special shirts and-
Yes.
But you're right, I've never, not that I'm everywhere at the township, but I like the idea of, of that.
Well-
Us employing them at the same time, they still get the mentor stuff and all that, but I know that's just a, I'm not sure that we have that budgeted anywhere, do we? We don't have that budgeted to hire that special group of people.
I just thought that it could be assimilated into our seasonal employment program through our participation with summer youth.
I know, but whoever did that budget, did they anticipate hiring ten or fifteen?
No, and that's why I threw it out as a proposal and a recommendation. I was tasked with, let's figure out a way to get the roadside trash picked up. And when I was looking through my budget, I identified this as a area of vulnerability that could be improved.
So I guess I'm saying, I don't know if this board feels this way, that I want to keep those ten kids or fifteen or whatever.
Eight.
Eight, whatever, you know, whatever we think, that could be funneled from them, but they actually could work for someone in our parks that could actually be a mentor to them in terms of, or, you know, wherever else. They could work in the building, custodians, they could work in arts, and you, wherever.
I hope to push this concept further with the sheriff's administration over the next few weeks.
I don't think we ever had it.
And, and come back to you and update you.
Well, we were supporting it. We're, I think what we're, what I'm saying, I don't know, I, I support that concept and I know, I think that it worked, I don't, I think that this other idea would work just as well for us to be like everybody else.
So we employ them here, yeah, because we need workers and the seasonal workers and it'd be a good opportunity.
But I know, what I'm, because I know that we don't have that special, they have to come through there, otherwise, because they're going to, frankly, they're probably going to have records, some of them, and, you know, so there has to be a-
I do know.
You know?
I mean, we hire people for goods, but Stan, you had a comment?
Yeah, they're preparing them for, for employment, for lifetime employment.
They're going to be young, too, some of them.
I'm going to move off that, I have a lot of thoughts on that one, but I don't want to digress. I had one more question on the budget.
Okay.
It's line item eight, three, one, zero, zero, eight. The sheriff's school, is that collaborative center?
School collaboration contract.
I just noticed that the budget's gone up there, not quite fifty percent, but, or a hundred percent, but, what is that?
Yep, so this year, I budgeted sixty-eight thousand and we actually spent forty-six five. Here's what I do, I, I budget at twelve weeks, which is what the original contracts were. Over the last several years, the schools have pared it down to ten weeks and this year, I don't remember if it was Lincoln or Ypsilanti Schools, the school resource officer that we would have gotten was going off on family leave. And so we're not paying for that long-term, so sheriff, lieutenant Morocco actually brought it to our attention and said, you're not, we're not going to have you pay for the entire summer because that person's not going to be working for you. So we spent considerably less than we ordinarily would have, but this year for 2019, I budgeted at twelve weeks for Ypsilanti's SRO and Lincoln's SRO working for us, and it may turn out to be less than twelve weeks, which it has the last several years.
So sixty-eight was actually the more correct number until we had to leave? And then that's what reduced it because we weren't charged for it?
Sixty-eight was closer to ten weeks because I was, yeah, I knew-
Okay, so seventy-four would be the twelve weeks if it, if we envisioned that it works?
If we get the full twelve weeks from both school resource officers, that's what it will cost.
Got it, thanks.
Madam Chair, just a real quick question.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a quick question and I don't know, because I, maybe this has never even came up before. There has never been a request for, from Van Buren in regards to any type of collaboration, I assume, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right, just curious, thank you.
I don't know that they would have, they would have to be given, granted authority in our jurisdiction, because they were there in Wayne County, Van Buren Township. So unless the sheriff deputized them, they wouldn't have jurisdiction here.
Who was that, the city?
Van Buren Township, or Van Buren Schools, air school resource officer. I don't know if it's a Wayne County deputy or a Van Buren Township officer or a Belleville officer, maybe?
Yeah, so that was the sheriff's department, three oh one. So their total budget for the sheriff's services was seven million, two hundred forty-five thousand, nine dollars. And so, and then the other part to the law enforcement is the ordinance part. I don't think there was any major changes in that other than the twenty-five percent that we explained from the rental, the housing and business rental inspections were in here. So that was the major change.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say this because I walked out and then we got on this other thing, but it was around the overtime thing. It actually says in here that overtime's decreased about twelve percent and you guys are still hoping to see that trend even with people being off on sick leave and whatnot? Or because you said that they were being really kind of pushed to work mandatory overtime consistently.
Our operations lieutenant, Morocco, has done a very good job of controlling the overtime and making sure what we're legitimately invoiced for is correct and that the county is-
So it's not actually how much overtime they're working is what we're paying for it?
What we're being charged, yes.
I understand. Thank you.
And then the other, the other line item in the ordinance is the motor pool miscellaneous repair. We have budgeted five thousand for that. That's to cover any things that come up that is not an ordinary scheduled maintenance. In the line below that, the motor pool lease, it, it, there's enough in there to do oil changes, windshield wipers, tires, but, you know, if somebody hits the side of the car or if a transmission goes, there's no money budgeted for that lease program in there. So we have to have a line item in case there's something that goes, the air conditioning goes in one of the vehicles, we need another line item for those repairs. So that's what that was for. And that was actually in each one of the other ones, too, in, in two forty-eight, because they, they have a lot of vehicles. Two forty-nine, there's that new line item in all of them so that we can make sure that we have enough budgeted for any upcoming non-scheduled repairs. Is there any other questions that we have? Then again, the last page is, is the projected fund balances. So I have it at twenty-two percent, which is healthy. Since there's no other questions, we'll go on to the nuisance abatement fund. This fund is when, whenever we have to do any boardups or any cutting of weeds and we charge back the residents for those. Correct, Michael? So it's a very, very small fund. If we do not collect for the grass cutting, we do put that on the tax rolls and we do try to collect on that.
Does the, does the boardup cost that you send to the resident, does that also include the padlacking cases that we do? Are they charged with those fines?
The padlacking, the drug padlacking cases are handled through court and we do get recovered, cost recovery, yes. This fund essentially manages when we send Looking Good out to cut vacant, or grass of vacant homes or businesses, when we send, I think, total construction we use primarily, sometimes Belfour or others for boardups. And occasionally, we get a special cleanup, like we spent four or five thousand dollars recently with a district court order to this yard that it took several forty-yard rolloffs to clean this yard on a court order. So we put a lien on the property and if it's uncollectible, it goes to taxes. So it all rolls through here.
I'm going to ask this strange question. On the boardup, didn't we a couple of years ago talk about instead of putting up plywood, that we're looking for something that gave a more natural look, like windows or, what did we ever do with that, if anything?
There was no agreement.
Wasn't it a safety concern about?
Oh, there was a lot of discussion. I just wondered if it just kind of went away and-
An agreement with the company?
No, I, we, I don't, to my memory, we-
I thought we did agree to it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I don't know where-
You can check it.
I wasn't on a board, so I wasn't, I don't know if there was an agreement on that. But I do remember that at one point in time, that there was a white board that was, that was suggested, at least if it wasn't approved, I don't know, but suggested by the township for boardups. And I remember that because there was a house literally across the street that was from my house that was vacant for a long time and it had brown boards and then all of a sudden, they had to put white boarding up. So I don't know if it was any type of agreement or anything like that, but I do remember that.
There was a proposal to use this new product that, when it went up, it didn't look like plywood, it looked like a window. Yep.
We did talk about it on the other one.
As far as I recall, there was no universal consensus to move that forward.
Okay.
But we could.
We can look it up.
We'll look it up, because I thought we did.
We thought we did.
Yeah, I think we did. I think-
What's that?
That we agreed to do that.
I know we wanted to.
Well, I know we discussed it, I would-
It would require an ordinance amendment.
Yeah, I, I don't honestly remember where the, the stop came, but I know we discussed it, I just thought I would ask.
Yep.
I didn't know if there's any desire to even look at it again, but-
I thought, I thought we were going to do it through, not through an ordinance, like, because we board up and we were just going to, yeah, we were just, that was, we were going to get an agreement with that company to do it, but-
We don't always do the boardups.
No, I know, but when we did.
Sometimes the owner does it, but we were going to require that whoever does it, does it a certain way.
I know the big issue we talked about was people passing through the community rather than seeing plywood all over buildings. We'd see a different look and maybe it would be beneficial to quality of life, at least the perception of it.
Right.
And we also talked about boardup standards in terms of how the boards are affixed. There's a way to do it where it's easily ripped off and you can get in, and there's a way to do it where you need a chainsaw to get through it. And we wanted to legislate how that's done, too.
I like to, I like to legislate just doors and screens and windows.
So two, five, two is the last budget, Joe? I know you have to leave, so I can handle it.
I do have to leave. Okay, if you will, do you want the little clicker?
Have fun. Thank you so much, Joe.
You're welcome.
So on the hydro, I know Michael Seren has been working on the repairs of the, the hydro generator, I think they call it. So if we go through the funds, I'm not sure how you want, the revenues estimated is, oh, thank you. Are there questions on the revenues? Projected to go up a little bit from three hundred and eighty-nine thousand to four hundred thousand. And then we have a transfer in from the general fund of seventy-nine thousand. Mr. Winters is in here, but that's a DTE payback amount. So Ypsilanti Township put, general fund, has done a lot of repairs out of a general fund. There is a fund set aside for each kilowatt and it's up to almost nine hundred thousand dollars. They have to start paying that back to the township per the contract. We asked for it back and they won't give it back. So they're going to do it according to the original contract, which is seventy-nine thousand every year, yeah, until it's paid back. So it's going to go to the general fund and we're going to transfer out from the general fund to the hydro station for revenue. Does anyone have any questions on the first page?
I just have a question generally about the hydro station, because I know a few meetings back, we talked about the, the dam in the city of Ypsilanti, like, changing or they were going to demolish the one over by the old paper mill.
Peninsula, I think.
Do you know if that's going to affect our revenues or, like, work at the hydro dam? I know Michael would be like the person.
Yeah, I did kind of, I thought it would give us more, but what do I know about?
Oh, because it's like more water.
It's rainfall.
That makes sense.
The more volume you have, okay.
Okay.
So-
Right. So are lots of snow in the water?
But we don't think it would be a deficit to our...
No, and I asked of how that would affect our dam. And they, he said it really wasn't affected. And my understanding is a report just came out recommending to remove that. And there are about four residents from Ipsy Township in that area that will be affected, because that's a border area for city and township. Does anyone have any questions on the expenditures? The changes that were made from the draft was sick and accident, were updated, vision benefits, and the life insurance, because we had the numbers since July.
Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions. This is where it falls into expenditures. The health insurance, I know it went up 22%, 22.4%. The activity in, in 2018 was $15,322. And I'm talking about line 719000. The requested budget for this year is $50,011.
It's 719000?
Yeah.
So that, because the employees, we have two permanent employees.
Okay.
And one part-time employee. We haven't hired the other full-time person to assist. So it's for two full-time employees.
Thank you. That answers that question, thank you. And then I just have one more, and that was in regards to line 801000, professional services. It looked like the requested budget this year is 50, well, for 19, it's $50,000. And it looked like on the average, they used about, give or take, $23,000.
According to the narrative, it says that there is a need for independent engineering firm for techno, technical support to the dam safety and the compliance for the Ford Lake Dam. So we don't have a professional engineer on staff. And it's higher, because there's a five-year test of the emergency action plan and engineering plans to replace an obsolete PLC, which, I'm not sure what that is, which is the heart of the generator. So the, it's a FERC requirement. So we have to hire a professional engineer for hydro in order to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions on that? Have you guys toured it before? Have you all toured the dam?
No, but I really like...
I would really encourage people to tour that dam. It is, I mean, it's in excellent condition, and... You know, it's Henry Ford, you can just see how it works, you know?
I have a side note, but I'll tell you later.
They got it up and running and everything, it probably wouldn't be bad, like, to do like an open house or something for residents.
Yeah, it's...
It is, it's one of the few historic buildings that we have. Might be the only one.
And whoever was, had the opportunity to tour from Ford Motor Company, one of the suppliers, actually donated plantings for the bee garden, like pollinator-friendly garden. So they're, they purchased them all, and, and they're going to plant them for us for next to start by the beehive, so. And they just love Michael at the hydro station. So that concludes the presentations for this work session on the budgets. If it's okay, we'll go into agenda review. I know that if we could, Wayne Dudley and Magistrate Nelson is here to talk about the request for line item, is it? Improvements to the 14B court. And I didn't know if we could, that's item number six on the agenda. Would it be all right if everyone, if we listen, okay?
Good evening. I know some of you are aware, the platform in my courtroom has been rotting over the last few years. Two years ago, we replaced a portion of it where it rotted, where it was getting really soft, where actually the prisoners walk across to go down into the courtroom. And now, is about last, two months ago, where I sit, has rotted through as well. No fat jokes, so. So, we pulled, we pulled up the carpet, Wayne's folks pulled up the carpet, and the laminate of the plywood was just literally coming up in pieces there. So that's one component, that needs to be just replaced, torn out and replaced. We don't know if the structure underneath has been damaged at all. We just know that the top boards are certainly been rotted out. So we were requesting to get quotes to look into that and replace that portion of it. In addition to that, while we're doing that, we wanted to add to Judge Pope's courtroom a ramp to allow prisoners to come down. Currently, they come down shackled, down a set of steps. It's an eight-inch drop-down, two steps, as you can see in the photo there on the far, my far right. And they often stumble, some have fallen there. Luckily, as far as I know, nobody's been seriously injured. And that door behind there, where you can see there's two doors, there's one that goes off onto the white wall, and there's one that goes out into the wood-paneled wall. That second door on the wood-paneled wall comes from the back hallway. And that's where prisoners are brought into the courtroom on a daily basis. So they have to negotiate those steps while shackled. In addition to that, if we have somebody that's in a wheelchair, has a walker that's in custody, the judge has to leave the bench, the recorder, everybody has to leave. And they currently bring them around to the ramp that exists through the bench area and on down, which is obviously disruptive and takes time out of the way. And it's also not safe, because you know, there's any number of things on the bench somebody could grab as they go by there. So in conjunction with repairs to my courtroom that are absolutely necessary, we wanted to bundle this in, to get this part done. My courtroom has a ramp that's accessible. There's a drawing of it. So my courtroom, there's a ramp behind that wall, you can't see by the Michigan flag.
Next picture.
There's the next picture, thanks, Wayne. There's a ramp existing there. And in my courtroom, the back hallway is accessible there. And Judge's courtroom, the back hallway is not accessible where his ramp is already. That goes into the other hallway where the old sheriff's department used to be. We're proposing putting a door there to utilize that ramp, rather than building a new ramp on my side, because my courtroom, the well, is shallower. And there's not enough room to draw out an eight-foot ramp that's necessary for ADA. So to solve that problem, my courtroom, we're proposing putting a doorway in where the Michigan flag is, where you can see the square that Wayne's drawn, done on the drawing there. So we have three things, I guess, basically, we're trying to accomplish. One, all for safety purposes, one, you know, I need someplace to sit without having to worry about falling through. And then, secondly, for prisoner transport safety, the ramp in Judge Pope's courtroom, and then the doorway to access the ramp in my courtroom to facilitate safer transfer of prisoners in and out of the courtrooms.
Are there any questions for Magistrate Nelson?
I do, I just want to point to it on the...
Yeah, of course.
I only have bad jokes that I'll refrain from.
Thank you.
Might need the microphone. Okay.
Mark or Wayne, what is, what is on the side of this wall here?
That, that half wall you can see going across there?
This wall here, that's, that's Judge's chambers.
Oh, yeah, the white wall there with the door, yeah.
Yeah, my question could be, would it not be better to build a door here and come straight in? You not worry about a ramp? Because don't you bring prisoners in here, and you have a court, orders sitting right there?
We bring them, they bring the, they bring the prisoners through this back door.
This back door?
Yeah.
This door to our right is the judge's chambers, and it is at the same level up here. You'd have the same problem being an eight-inch lift there.
All right. My question, Mark, is they come right past your staff?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And it's not to keep that staff from being harmed.
Right, that's, that's another issue that we, you know, would like to address. That's just not part of what we can address here.
Is there a way, Mark?
Wait a minute, let's, let's go one at a time.
Is there a way, Mark, that...
Well, that, that back, there's this whole schematic there. Wayne, if you could show them where the back hallway stops coming into Judge Pope's courtroom?
This is Mark's courtroom, this is Judge's courtroom. There's a door here, so we can't put a door here. There's a, there's a security door here that isolates the booking and the jail cell. So this, this doorway would not last.
Lisa, could you go back to that first picture again? Because I'm lost looking at that one. So if you can't put a new door in, which I get now, I understand. Is there some way to put up a glass partition, at least? Mark, you've been around...
Yeah.
You've been around bad guys.
Right.
As I have, and as Mike has.
Yeah.
They can come in, they don't necessarily have to grab you.
I've been around bad guys.
That's, we're not talking about personal issues right now, so. I know, she did. So my point is, they don't have to come by and grab you physically with their hands, even though they're cuffed.
Right.
They can spit on you and do any number of things.
Yeah.
So my question is, can't you put up a glass partition, at least? At least, you know, that gets to the height of most people, which is six foot, or six and a half feet? Just to keep them from...
Yeah.
Right, it's not great, I get, but it's better than not having anything there when they pass by.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's...
Now, as you come through that back door there, Wayne, that you pointed to me, is they're coming straight ahead to go down that ramp. To their right, as they walk in, could there not be a glass partition that starts at the top of the desk and goes higher, to keep them from accosting any staff that are there? Or even the judge or yourself in your courtroom? It's not a, it's not unheard of that they could hop over or just run behind that desk.
Right, yeah, that, that's, that's a separate concern, and it is an ongoing concern. Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we have a number of, we have a number of holes in our security.
I'm just thinking, since they're already, if we're already going to be there doing construction, would not be cheaper to do it now and be proactive, instead of waiting for a magistrate, or a judge, or a staff member to be assaulted?
Yeah, I, we can look into that. I'm not sure, from a practical point of view, how we can do that, because it's such a closed, close area there. You know, as, as we have contractors out, Wayne, we can certainly ask them, I suppose, but I mean, that's, it, you know...
Well, I'm just saying, a glass partition, it's no more than two inches wide. It could start on the top of the desk and go straight up. I'm not encroaching on the walkway with it.
Right, but it's, it's open, there's, that, that desk doesn't go all the way back to the wall.
Well, you could start, you could start...
If the desk stops here, there's like a four-foot opening.
Okay, but...
But you have to put some kind of door to make it go all the way through. Because they do pass the judge's chambers in the...
Who's "they"?
The judge's chambers.
Okay. Could you not, could you not put in a, just a plexiglass that has an opening back and forth? It's locked from the inside, if you need it, but just plexiglass. It's not going to encroach on your walkway, because if it did that, you'd have all kinds of ADA concerns, then.
Yeah.
You could simply put up a plexiglass that's not intrusive, really, anyway. I mean, it doesn't look bad, it's just plexiglass going straight up, no more than the glass windows that the full-time officials have here.
Yeah, I'm sure, that is, you know, that...
Just a thought.
Yeah. Yeah, no, but you're, you're right, I mean, that is, that is a vulnerability. And that, that's something that's been a concern of mine for, amongst other things.
Just my only comment that's not a joke, is just that I would rather our board and you guys look for doing everything the right way, and like getting, you know, I, I guess, me personally, I'd rather spend more money to have it done and safe, and how you want it for the next 20 years, than coming back later to piecemeal other things. So if that's really a safety concern of your staff, I would prefer, personally, as a board member, for you to just figure out how you would ideally like to do it, maybe even ask the contractors that you're going to have come in, and just figure out the best way to do it, and then I'd be happy to...
Yeah, we have the immediate need of the rotting wood. And then we have the other requests to address some of the safety and access issues. So I think it, I don't, common sense says maybe the plexiglass would be very easy to do.
I mean, I'm okay to approve what you're asking tonight, as, and I guess I would just ask if we could include in that, to allow you the ability to go out and look at other solutions as well.
Yeah, no, we would, we'd absolutely be open to looking into, to better ways of doing it, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We can just take it out of the treasurer's budget?
Thanks, Mark, and bringing it a little...
Thank you, appreciate it.
I did have a question.
Clark.
I thought it was the board's budget. I was just wondering how young Mr. Nelson felt about his father's floor rotting in. You're probably concerned, right? Yeah, so am I. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it. And go Lincoln.
He's a teddy bear.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You go to date, you go to the same school with my little kiddos.
Okay.
Cooper, want to get up and say anything, Mark?
Don't trip over your shoe.
Thank you for having me here.
Say it in Spanish.
Thanks, have a good night.
All right, and we'll go to the agenda, then. We have the consent agenda with the minutes and statements and checks in the August Treasurers Report. No, is there a discussion? There were some changes that I had given, Clark Rowe, but I didn't know if there were any other. Attorney's report, not here. Under new business, we have the request of Habitat for Humanity for funds for the renovation of 2754 Apple Ridge. I don't believe they're going to be able to make it, but it's pretty self-explanatory in their request. So, and we have it budgeted. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, just a comment, is I know some friends that live over in Apple Ridge, and like their whole comments about just how many renters have been over there, or not renters, actually, slum owners have been over there. And so I'm really excited for Habitat to, to come in and just help them establish their neighborhood that's, has been great and needs to continue being great.
I think they have three or four homes over there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the next item is on the first reading for the rezoning that was approved at the planning commission level. And it was for 3160 West Michigan Avenue to, from multiple family, which is what it's currently zoned, to the master plan, future land use of B3 general business, which is what it's currently master planned for. This is, Clark Rowe and I were discussing, it's the first time we've ever done this kind of rezoning, which is conditional rezoning. And, and Stan, I don't know what you have, comment you have, if you want to talk about it.
As far as what's proposed to go there?
Yeah.
It's going to be a...
Oh, Charlotte's here.
It's going to be, do you want to take it? It's going to be an elite training center for tennis instruction.
So what's before you tonight is specifically a rezoning for 3160 West Michigan Avenue, south of 94. The parcel is conditionally zoned, or it's going to be conditionally rezoned, where it's going to prohibit automotive uses. It's currently zoned RM2, multiple-family residential. The idea is it will be rezoned to B3 general business prohibiting automotive use. That's strictly what is before you tonight. The use that they are proposing there, that is not binding through this conditional rezoning, is a tennis facility, and a tennis facility could not go currently in that RM2 zoning district. This is fully in line with our master plan, the 2014 master plan, where it's master-planned future land use to general commercial, which corresponds to the zoning category of B3 general business. So this is actually going to be putting it in line with our current master plan to that B3 general business zoning. But it is the, it will only have the restriction of prohibiting automotive uses. What is a conditional rezoning? It's the same exact process as a rezoning. It's exactly the same. It's something that's voluntary, where the applicant comes forward and requests restrictions. There's a multitude of different things that they could say, like, oh, I, it could be tied to a site land, it could be tied to a certain use. In this case, they said that they wanted it to be prohibiting automotive uses. And that would be through a deed restriction as well. So I think that's pretty much all I had in my report, is if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Clerk Row?
So Brenna and I were talking because we've never done this, we were always told you couldn't re conditionally, did state law change somewhere along the way or either that or we never applied for it? Do you know, Charlotte, when it changed, allow a rezoning?
To allow it?
With a condition, because I don't think it was historically allowed, but anyways, it doesn't matter.
It is 2006, thank you, Act 110.
Anyway, so traditionally township board would rezon something through a PUD to totally control and the site plan controls it, but in this case, you couldn't do the PUD until after it goes to B3 because the underlying zoning, PUD, you can't be zoned, like you can't say I'm going to zone it to housing when the underlying zoning is B3, it's got to be the same. So we, pan unit developed where the rezoning actually becomes a site plan, so anything they change in that, so say if the B3 went through and then we came back and said, let's do a PUD, then they would have to come back to the board. So I was just wondering, would there be any recommendation or what would you think about if we did B3 and then did PUD for that site, when they brought that site plan in and zoned it to that so that we could basically have more say, control on the opening corridor? Because I can think of a lot of B3s that are, may not be automotive, that might not necessarily, you can do some to what you might want in the area, so I don't know.
So you're asking, why would you want a PUD? Why, why, why wouldn't we do a PUD?
Why wouldn't we later do, why?
You could.
Would there be anything against doing a PUD later on for this development to, so it's specific to the site plan, because that's not what you're voting on tonight.
Yeah, that's.
We're going to be voting on clearly switching this to P3, B3, so he could sell it tomorrow or after the two votes and it might not be a tennis court.
It could be all retail, it could be all, any of the uses in the B3 that are non-automotive if this was to be approved. The, as far as putting as a PUD down the line, I don't think that would be an appropriate use of the PUD and that type of tool because that would, PUDs allow for a lot of flexibility and allow for the applicant to be able to, you know, give more open space or do some other.
Increase density, they get those trade-offs. Parking space.
And do multiple uses that may not be permitted all in one area, there's, it's, it's basically a flexible tool while the uses that, and this is, as I said, down the line for the proposed, you know, indoor outdoor tennis court and retail, those are all permitted uses, whether it's principally permitted or through special conditional use through our current zoning ordinance. So I, I think that a, a PUD would just be a very complicated way and that's something that also you, you kind of want a public good coming out of there, you want it to be something that has benefit to the community and this is something that would be more of a private possible proposal for a use.
Well, my concern would be, I mean, this is a difficult parcel to get somebody to develop anyways, the way it sits and I wouldn't want to scare them off with a PUD on this one.
Actually, a PUD would help them then, I mean, if there's problems, because you can, you have a lot of flexibility.
Right, but then you're, I mean, zoning to the site plan.
I don't know what the issues are.
You'd be zoning to the site plan.
Right, and I don't know, I mean, but if they have issues, you, you can help them do that and it, I don't know.
I, I would not recommend that.
It'd be interesting to talk if there are issues, like are there going to be parking lot issues, are there going to be, you know, frontages, you know, are there issues that, or what they want to do on the site because then a PUD would be perfect. I know, you, you have, I know, but just, so what are all the uses allowed under B3 that aren't automotive? Maybe, you don't have to do it now as we get second reading, but, because that's what we're zoning it to, is any of those.
Actually, I'm sorry, I just got.
It's okay.
Fall down here real quick, do you mind if I go grab my laptop?
No, 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 you don't have to, just maybe next time you could bring it, because after.
Yeah, it's, and it's all under that schedule of uses, there's retail, there is office space.
Restaurants.
Restaurants.
Drive-throughs.
Yeah, it's general commercial.
I think daycare, no.
Car wash, Burger King.
Daycare could, I think, it's special conditional, if it meets all the certain requirements.
Car wash is automotive.
Car wash would be considered automotive.
Gas station is automotive.
Gas station is automotive, minor auto repair is automotive, dealerships, whether new or used automobiles, off-street parking lots.
So, one other thing and then I'll shut up about it. But between now and this second reading, would you be opposed or could we have a resolution and an ordinance that basically lists all those things that aren't allowed out because 20 years from now, and, well, some of you all might still be here, but, you know, to, to remember, and you may change the, what that section is, and then when you change that, then people are going to have to remember back to all the, it'd just be a nightmare to go back and see what a.
I'm sure there wouldn't be a problem listing those out, because it's.
Right.
Basically, just re-saying exactly what's been said in the ordinance code.
So as a person who researches and has to go and find stuff, names change, everything, like if it's in here, then it, then someone can say when.
Yeah, it would be helpful for future users.
20 years from now, they're going to say, oh, this isn't, this is what's allowed and so, so, thank you, Charlotte. Great job.
All right, and this was recommended by the planning commission.
Correct.
All right, so, and I know you have to go to something as well, right? Okay, no, no problem. Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you.
And number three, we have the request of Mike Radsick for approval of the letter of understanding for the police services contract to increase the scope of services to 38 and setting the service pricing through 2022. He briefly discussed that, so. I am a little disappointed that we weren't able to get anyone hired in addition to our current staff, but, I don't, we can't control that, right? We don't control that process. So hopefully they'll be able to do it and they're, they are working hard. I think it's harder to recruit police officers, it's very competitive as well, they're offering like $5,000 if you move somewhere, moving costs, bonuses, there's all kinds of things that the different police agencies are doing.
A lot of reason people don't want to do that job today.
And we also have the request for the approval of the animal service contract, say annual renewal, and then request of Mike Radsick for authorization to seek legal action if necessary to abate public nuisance for the property located at 359 Oregon and 585 Rosewood. Any questions on that? Mr. Williams? The next item is for Martin Nelson, and we discussed that already. Then the budget amendments are the last item and I'm, thank you for doing, changing the, that to the end, it's much appreciated.
Yeah, we'll have the, it's okay, let me go ahead?
Yeah, for some reason it's not on.
Yeah, we have the general fund budget is going to increase if you approve it by $56,505 and that's for PTO payouts and for increase in the cost of seasonals for the year. And I don't know if you've noticed, but there was a lot of work done in the parks and that took more bodies than time to do that.
Hey, can't, since you just mentioned that, the work done cutting the trees down at North Bay, the open, opening that, so you could, it's unbelievably nice.
I think Carl did it, right?
Whoever did that did a phenomenal job.
They probably did the same at Ford Lake Park.
I haven't seen that one yet, I guess, in the same way, but I can't tell me people who stopped me and said something about it, unbelievably nice.
Carl Gerbach did it and, and the staff here, you know, and they did work a lot.
Whoever did it and whoever worked on it did a phenomenal job.
Anyways, the next, thanks, Stan. Oh, okay. You say in the budget amendments, in the, when it packed, okay, so we'll get those for the meeting, I'm really, really sorry. Well, anyways, the next one is, I only have one copy too. Next one is, there's a move to increase the BSR2, the bike sidewalk rec roads, general fund budget by $27,000 and that's for, totally for sidewalks that were improved this summer or this season, and increase the 14B for the improvements, the $25,000 that's proposed on the agenda and also for small PTO payouts and law enforcement by 2078, which is 100% PTO payouts and $4,597 and that, which is totally PTO payouts and we'll get copies for everybody before, during the break, before, sorry about that.
The master plan works shops, I hope you all can make them to some of them, I went to the, first one this, today was from one to four and there was like 35 residents that had been through there, it was really, Megan and the staff and I would like to say Crystal and Charlotte and Sarah Jo has really been trying to push it out, CBB pushed it out as well and the mailing helped, so it was, and I loved the way it was set up, you gave them, you know, where do you live and you went to your specific area and then they would ask, what, what do you like about it, what do you want to improve and it, it was a very good process, so I encourage, tomorrow they have the driving tour for the industrial American Center for Mobility. And speaking of American Center for Mobility, that news article came out that Washington has no more certification for the autonomous vehicles, so we were very competitive and there were 10 awarded that were certified, that could get certified for the autonomous vehicle research. He, the government has taken those regulations back and so we don't have the designation of that. We had a meeting last week with the, the new ACM interim director, Congresswoman Debbie Dingle was there, Mike Radsick and I met, and Ronnie Peterson, and I just kind of expressed our concerns because the story is, you know, John Maddox is no longer with us, he's been replaced, and then the second story was the fact that you took away the designation as federally, you know, designated area. They weren't as concerned about it as I was, but they did agree to have another meeting bringing in the federal secretary of transportation in order to help address and make the community feel better about, we're so far advanced than the other nine designations, so they were going to supposedly, you know, tell us how well positioned Willow Run is, so some positive press can come out of it. And that is supposed to happen between Aga, October 24th and October 30th, so I'll keep you abreast of that. We just wanted to, you know, tell a better story because the last two articles were not positive. I, I'm, I'm glad to know they weren't as concerned as I was, but I'm still concerned. And they're going to be hiring a full-time, permanent director again, they're doing a search, they said it should be in place by February, the new director. Mr. Stidl is currently the Michigan Department of Transportation Director and he is the interim acting director for the American Center for Mobility, so that's who the meeting was with. I met him for the first, you know, I, it was good to at least meet with them to see where they're at. He had just gotten back from Australia and meeting with different groups to partner financially with American Center for Mobility. He seemed very positive and very upbeat, just interesting to sit around a table and no one, we didn't know anyone there, like.
Changed.
Everyone has changed, everyone has changed there but us, so, but it was positive, I just want you guys to tell that, to know that. We also have a meeting set up with the YMCA, so.
Be in prayer.
So we'll keep you posted on those conversations as they proceed forward as well. So those are the two things that I wanted to share with the group and we'll take a break.
Can I just do a little election update? Things are moving really crazy, but really good and we're busier than I've been in 10 years, I wasn't here for the 2008, first time Obama got elected, but I've never, I've never experienced this, so the staff is working really hard together, we're staying on top of it with overtime. I am in need of, of people, of workers, so if you know anyone, if you want to give, especially in the morning, we got back our list of lines, like from the presidential election just two years ago, because we had to keep a tally, we have several areas that we know that we're going to have 100, we were 100 people and 150 people in line then, so it's probably going to be even more, so you could just work in the morning or the afternoon to work the lines, hand out ballots, encourage people to read them so that the lines aren't so long, have an iPad or your phone so you can look up to make sure people are in the right line. If you know anyone who wants to work all day, I could use them, if you know anyone who wants to work, say from 7 o'clock until 10, that would be great, or in the evening so they could, you know, just at least help supplement and work the lines if.
How many people?
All right, and I really wanted at the big precincts, I wanted to have nine, I don't have nine anywhere, I have eight at some, seven, I still have some that only have six, so I probably could use up to eight people, you know, that could work full-time.
That are greeters.
Well, I need, I need, no, they all got to be certified still, but I, and we can do that, because there's still some opening sessions, but they, I need, I still need people to work in the polls, but then I also need people to work the key, the double precincts I wanted to put, nine people at those, so there was extra person, you know, we're like Rossum, where there's two, Rossumville, there's two Apollo, there's two at there, so anyways, that's it, thank you.
Madam Chair, just real quick, if that, if I can have a point of privilege, I just wanted to make sure I extended a thank you to yourself and also trustee Wilson, I know we all attended the YCS meeting, that was a board meeting that was really important to the residents of Sugar Brook and particularly they came and then also Thurston, and at least YCS has adopted a resolution that they're going to try and tear those schools down, so I just wanted to make sure I expressed my thank yous for that, because I, you know, it was really important to those residents, so.
Thank you, okay, let's.